Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome. Excuse me, sir. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, scheduled for January 13th, 2025. I'm calling this meeting to order. And let the record show that a quorum is present. At this time, our invocation will be delivered by Mr. Corey Scott.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we are grateful to gather in this planning board meeting. We're grateful for the service that these planning board members provide. Grateful for all the citizenry that are here tonight and their interest in the proceedings. We pray that we will be attentive, understanding, kind, courteous, and considerate of others as we participate in these proceedings. We certainly pray, Father, for thy blessing, for thy Spirit to help us to accomplish what we need to and be able to reconcile the needs of the community with the laws in the state of North Carolina. Bless these proceedings, Father, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Next is adoption of the agenda. Before I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda under new business, I would like to add, informing you of the board of a change to North Carolina General Statute 160D-601. And I have a copy, which I will distribute later in the meeting, from the University of North Carolina School of Government, on what the limits of downzoning are, how they've changed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the change you stated.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda with changes requested by motion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 9th, 2024 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2024 meeting of the county planning board. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so the motion carries and the minutes are approved. The following is some general information for you about rezoning. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. Excuse me. When making a decision, we consider recommendations of the planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Department of Energy Environmental Quality. Each case on this agenda will be presented by staff. The applicant will be given seven minutes to present their thoughts on the application, after which we will hear from the public. Each speaker from the public has three minutes. You'll be called to speak in the order in which your name appears on the sign up sheet. And after that, we will have an additional five minutes given to the applicant for rebuttal of your comments. If you don't use all your time, you can designate the balance to another speaker. If you'd rather not speak, you can give all your time to another speaker. But those speakers can only be heard one time. You can't speak twice. With that, we will now hear from Victoria on our first case, 2025-01.
All right, so our first case is 2025-01, a request to rezone a property from residential protected to neighborhood commercial. This is located in the southeast corner of Highway 158 and Woody Road. This is in the New Bethel Township, and it is a straight rezoning. The current parent parcel measures 3.73 acres and is located at the corner of 158 and Woody Road. The parcel directly abuts others that are zoned residential protected and residential agricultural. There's a closer up view. This is...
We're not seeing anything on the screen. The screens are not on.
Over there?
I haven't checked for part of your PC. It should be coming out.
Hmm. I can see it on here, but not on there.
That's wonderful.
Do you have it in slideshow mode?
Oh, that may be it. Let me see. All right, how about now? Good? Okay. Let's see where I left off. All right, there's the zoomed in zoning map. So it's in the G2 Controlled Growth Land Class according to the land use plan. It is characterized by neighborhood scale, commercial activities, and medium-density residential growth, generally where public water and sewer services are not available. The G2 may provide for neighborhood commercial uses appropriately scaled to serve nearby residential neighborhoods and areas. The land use plan does promote the development of new commercial opportunities while supporting the retention and expansion of existing businesses. Let's see. There's our... Which map am I on? Zoning map, okay. There's no notable environmental features, and the land has always been historically zoned residential protected. As far as reasonableness, the parcel meets the necessary size to rezone to neighborhood commercial. We found that this may benefit property owners, but may be detrimental to adjacent owners. That might be something to explore. For that reason, we found it partially reasonable, but negative effects may be mitigated with landscape buffers, any extra site development regulations. And as far as consistency, the current uses are almost exclusively residential. But after reviewing the application, staff has recommended approval of this case.
Any questions for Victoria?
I would like to add that we did have three inquiries and one opposition about potential runoff issues. We also received three emails today in opposition, mostly wanting to keep the community quiet and commercial free where there are concerns. And we do have a lot of people, it seems, in opposition that are, you know, willing to share, so... Do you all have any questions for me?
All right, thank you, Victoria. All right, well, is the applicant here? All right. For the record, please state your name and address.
Jennifer Augie, 503 Piney Woods Road in Burgall, North Carolina, 28425.
Now, what is it you'd like us to know about your application?
What I would like you to know, that we are simply requesting the rezoning from residential protected to neighborhood commercial. I would like to let you know that we do not have immediate project plans for the property at this time. We have looked at your land use plan. Looks like you have a beautiful community planned with lots of guidelines in place for that, which I think would be protective of the community. And of course, as living in communities ourselves, we would desire that whatever would be there would be something that would be an asset and would help the community to grow well. We all know that progress is coming to different areas, especially around cities. But when we are able to get on the front end of that, we can make sure that it's done well, and it's done beautifully, and it can be an asset to the residents of the community and to the community as a whole. So although we do not have specific project plans at this time, we would like to collaborate and adhere to, you know, whatever the community desires and what that might look like, and in hopes that this actually would be good progress for the community. Thank you. Oh, so sorry. Yes.
Any questions for this?
Yes.
John Roberts?
You just stated that you were willing to allow the residents of that community to have input into, as to the use of that property. Was that your statement?
It would be interesting to hear what residents would like to have on that piece of property, what would be beneficial to the community.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. So you don't have a specific plan or anything in mind for this piece of property?
This is a straight rezoning.
Yeah, this is...
She's entitled to any of the uses.
Right, 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 right. Ah, okay.
I do have a question. Is this the application, historical development? Are you guys... Is this a corporation?
Yes, sir.
It is a corporation.
It is mainly based in Pender County. And the owners, if you will, shareholders, they are both elderly, two have died. And because there's two families in this, it is, you know, we're trying to do the best thing we can for the entire corporation.
How long have you had this property, this corporation?
1,008, I believe it is. Let me look. Hang on a second. I'm trying to read.
Yeah, it shows 2006.
Purchased by a corporation.
What type of businesses do you typically engage in?
Timber property. Timber, timber, which that's why it's based in Pender County there. And we purchased this years ago and at the advice of somebody in the corporation. And we've held it for all these years. And so now we're thinking, well, what might be a good next step?
Does your corporation have experience with other commercial ventures other than timber?
No, we do not.
So this might be something new for you?
It would be completely new. I mean, it would not be for timber.
Right. But it's not a large parcel with a lot of timber.
Right, 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 right.
Your corporation would develop your sales, or are you looking to possibly sell it?
That I don't know. Sell is a possibility. That could be with restriction if that, I mean, like if there was something to say, hey, you could sell it for these purposes, or we would certainly be open to discussion for that. I'm not 100% sure because there's another family involved.
And just to clarify, we can't place any restrictions on what's being built on this property, correct?
No. No, this is not any conditional rezoning. This is a straight rezoning.
Right. So everything on the list could be if...
Eligible.
Yeah, is eligible. And that includes if the property is sold, any of these purposes or uses can be put in place.
Exactly. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll have five minutes of rebuttal time once we hear from the public.
Okay, thank you.
The first speaker signed up to speak is Chris Debnam. To whom? Okay. Tara Bulla? Yes, you have to come to the podium. And for the record, you have to state your name and address.
My name is Tara Bulla, and my property is directly beside the property there. So it's 13678 US 158.
And what is it you want us to know?
Well, I wasn't sure exactly what was going to go on the property. Now I know that it's really up in the air, and that's even more worrisome because I have no idea what could go there. And my fear is that, I mean, single mom there with my children. And I don't want to invite any property, commercial property, to that area where I feel like it would put me or my children maybe at a disadvantage or worry about their safety because I don't know who would be coming to that property at any given time, morning, day, or night. I feel like it would invite opportunity for just anybody to be in the area. And I don't think that's a safe thing for me and my family, among other things like whatever, you know, it would do to the landscaping in the area. It's beautiful. It's quiet. That's why we moved there. I don't like the idea of, you know, I know progress is progress, but I don't want it in my backyard or beside me. So that's kind of where my feelings are on the property.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dixon? Or Rickson Dixon? Have I got your name right?
I ain't lost a minute of time, so I'll take it. Can I, before my three minutes starts, can you put the map back up there, please? Push it down a little bit, shrink it down.
They can't do that.
Yeah, put the, you had a one up there where you could see all the houses.
It's the zoning map. See.
There you go.
There's a... That one?
Yeah.
Before you start, could you give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Drexel Dixon. My address is 1079 Hudson Road there in Summerfield. I'm fortunate enough to own that farm across the road where that little farm office is at, so when you see Atlas Harbor, that agricultural piece there, and then the agricultural piece on the north side of 158, I'm a partner in. And so we're downhill, that Atlas Harbor is downhill from that lot. And kind of any way, any development, I can appreciate them wanting to get it rezoned on real estate out there.
Would you stand in front of the podiums for the microphone?
I appreciate her, them wanting to get the property rezoned because it opens up a lot of opportunities. It brings on additional markets. And not, it's kind of a general, let's open it up and have the authority to build on it. Different things. So I think trying to come in here with just one step forward to get it rezoned, you really should reconsider it. It is ripe for commercial out there. I get it. I mean, I've lived out there for 60 years. I totally understand that it's ripe for commercial. But this particular property, if you go visit it and if you look at the topography, I heard you say earlier that environmental things would be looked at later. Water doesn't run downhill. In my lifetime, I've never seen it do a lot of that. That lot over there drains in one spot and one spot only, and it drains across the road and goes directly into my pond. Five years ago, I stood before this board and begged them not to put the Dollar General at the other end because all the water... I want you all to think about something. There's a $10 million school up there, and I'm waiting for this to happen. All the water that runs out of that parking lot goes directly into what used to be a Clearwater Pond on that $10 million new school up there. You should do a water sample and let the Environmental Protection Agency look at that. If any commercial goes over there, and I understand why you want it rezoned, if anything goes over there that can't absorb the water and you pave it and try to get that water off, it's going directly in my pond, and I don't have tax dollars to bail me out like that school's going to have. I don't want my fish dead. They're dead in that pond. I say I got 40 seconds. There's no frogs living in it. You ought to do a water sample.
It's not within our jurisdiction to do that.
Well, don't put us in a position that my cows, please, that my cows and my fish, the advantage if this gets approved is maybe all the people that like to poach and fish will quit because a pond will be stagnant. And so I think you really ought to consider what you're doing, put some common sense behind this. And I hear what you want to do. It is a disaster for the community, so I would push hard to keep that little spot residential so it won't have so much runoff. That's my take.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Dixon, you said that you own 13, 3752, right beside Atlas Harbor, Atlas Harbor? And then you are part owner in 13863, is that correct?
If you can do north, south, east, west with me, I'm a redneck country boy. 158 runs east and west. Woody Road runs north and south. This piece of property that lies directly across Woody Road to the east, to the west, the larger tract that Atlas Harbor's cut out of, that pond that doesn't show up on this one, is a direct runoff to that entire...
Okay, so...
...corner like that. And the property on the north side, on the left side, where y'all put the sign at? The way I got involved is I got my buddies calling me saying, Mr. Dixon, why is the rezoning sign on your property? I said, what are y'all talking about? And so they had to come out there and move the rezoning sign because it was put on my property. So I was concerned.
So is your other parcel is directly across north of the parcel that we're considering, not your current parcel? I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm west, directly west of that parcel across Woody.
Okay.
And north, I go across Woody over, across 158. It's the old Woody Farm. It crosses the road.
And how long have you owned this property?
I bought it six months before they did. 2005, I think, six months before they bought that corner across the road.
And you bought both parcels at the same time?
The corner we're talking about was never part of mine, but no, I did not.
I'm finished.
We wouldn't be having this discussion if it had been a part of mine. Sorry.
Can I ask you a question? You mentioned that you're concerned about water runoff? And what do you think is going to be on that property that would cause the water to runoff onto your property?
Well, even the Dollar General, sir, up the road, which any commercial where you've got a lot of pavement is going to create runoff. And so what tends to happen, and I see it because I walk every day, like even this week when we had the cold weather, cars will break down, they'll pull in those parking lots, overheating, so you're going to have the antifreeze, and that's what's killed the pond up at the other end that we can't talk about. And my pond's going to get it this time because if you got cars pulling there, there's going to be oil, sir. There's going to be cigarette butts. That little block building, if y'all are looking at what you're doing, that says 33 degrees, farm office over there, I have to keep piles of gravel in front of that to keep from picking up condoms and needles and diapers every weekend on that corner. It must be the exchange drugs and babies corner of the world, so I have to keep that blocked off. And they still throw it behind the store. It all runs downhill. It's a mess out there. If you let anything start running water off of that corner, it is going to be a disaster. And it's just horrible environmentally.
Mr. Dixon, how many feet would you guess your pond is from that piece of property?
Straight across there, help me, Garrett, is it 500 feet? Is it that far? 400? Woody Road piped. It's piped across Woody Road onto your property? Is that what you're... Yes, sir. It's that whole corner comes, it comes from the lady that spoke, from her driveway from that ridge. It just funnels.
How long has it been like that?
Oh, I mean, since the roads were paved and stopped it from, you know, just running.
I figured your pond, if you don't mind me asking.
I think it's 1.4 acres, and it's freshwater fed. And so it just, you know, it kind of breaks your heart. Even the generations in front of me, you can't really see it riding down 158, but it'll just break your heart. You can see the old two-seater post that propped up in that overhang. That's where the cows would cross onto the road. But over the years, that Woody family stacked rock, like where that underdrain on 158 is, at an angle to go out around the spring to keep water. They didn't have the pond, but they did it to keep water clean, that they could drink out of, and I put a pond and put fish in it. And like I said, within 60 months, if anything's built over there that has runoff, that has a parking lot, and commercial tends to bring a parking lot. If anything runs off within 60 months, my neighbor and I, we won't have to worry about anybody fishing anymore because there'll be nothing in there. It will kill it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Am I going to get this right? Is it Garrett Dixon?
You got it right, but I was going to yield my time to him if he needed it.
Well, he got more than your time.
Thank you.
Bruce Dedona? Did I pronounce your name correctly? I apologize.
It's Dedona.
And please state your address, please.
1469 Woody.
Okay. And what is it you'd like us...
It's my mom's property.
Okay, what is it you'd like us to know?
Well, I mean, you know, just like she's worried about her kids, I'm worried about her. She's elderly. You look at a lot of these people here, there's a lot of elderly people, so if you bring like maybe a gas station in there, I don't know what you're going to put in that small lot because it's pretty small. So if you put, like you say, you know, all the concrete and asphalt or whatever they're going to put out there, you have a gas station, I mean, there could be just, you know, a lot of people that don't need to be there, you know, you got to worry about. You know, I got a couple of businesses in Greensboro, and I see gas stations getting robbed all the time. And if you got a gas station, which would probably be the most likely thing to put right there, you know, just you get people coming in, it's a probably 24-hour-a-day gas station, and you got to worry about, you know, people coming in, being noisy in the middle of the night when people are trying to sleep. You got the neighborhood right behind there. It's really not, I don't know. I'd buy the property if you sell it, so you just eliminate this. So...
Okay.
I mean, you know, if it is a gas station, we don't know what it's going to be, but if you zone for whatever, they could put a gas station there. It's going to be a sheets. They're huge. I mean, that's a 3 point, what, how many, 3.8 acres? Yeah. I mean, they could take that whole property up, and it's going to be not good for the neighborhood to put that right there, you know? The amount of traffic, it's like, where's the cars going to go? Do they come in off of Woody or they come in off of 158?
Do you live in the community?
I know the community. My mom does.
You live in Greensboro?
I live in Greensboro. But I got to worry about her. So that's why I'm here. You know, gas stations get robbed all the time, and you get a lot of people leaving trash, trash, where's it going to blow? In her property and my mom's property. Like you said, cigarette butts, wrappers, whatever. It's going to be a gas station, it's going to be maybe not a Dollar General, we already got one, but it could be some sort of little store or something.
Okay, thank you. Mark, is it Hubbard? Howard? Mark? Looks... Yes, it could be. You have a very unique handwriting. You have a very unique handwriting.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name and address.
Mark Hazelwood, I'm on 1376 Witty Road.
Okay.
Me and my family moved there about five, six years ago and didn't know at the time of that we were buying into somewhat family land that were the Witties. And it's just beautiful, since we've, you know, we've always wanted to move out in Summerfield. And I'm a claimful guy, that I grew up, and Summerfield's somewhere I always wanted to be because it's beautiful. Fishing, hunting, I'm an outdoorsman, and so is my daughter that's back there. And they go to Bethany and would just like to say that I'd hate to see it become something as of, like a gas station, something like that. And as far as agricultural, across the street, and my good neighbors across the other street that own a good parcel, I just hate to see it, you know, turn into something that we're trying to stay away from. I like the country, I love the beautiful Summerfield, it's just beautiful. And I used to hunt out here when I was a kid, and it's just somewhere I've always wanted to be. And I've hated, I don't plan on moving. My girls are seven and 11 years old. And yeah, so I'd like for it to not become something like that. I'd hate to see something like that. And I'd like to stay out here a good, long while and not have to move again. So, yes.
Thank you.
Carol Knuckles, 196 Atlas Arbor Road. So we're directly across from where the parcel they're talking about. We've really, we moved out here almost 10 years ago. And we lived in Colfax before. And Colfax used to be like this area until the first parcel service station moved in there. And then it has literally gone commercial up and down that road. We do not want to see this happen in this area. We've got a lot of good neighbors who own nice farmland and homes across the road that we really would like to keep in the country atmosphere, not commercial. I mean, we've got gas stations on three different ends of this area, so we do not need another gas station. We don't need a Dollar General. It does not need to be commercial put right there in that corner. But that's kind of, we'd like to just keep what we've got, you know? And you can see most of the people out here are in agreement, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Scott Jobe. I'm at 340 Lake Walton Drive, which is about a good eight iron from this property. It's, I just want to speak this evening, I appreciate y'all having us out this evening, I appreciate the applicants being here this evening to talk to us. Main reason tonight was to come to get some more information, to find out exactly what was gonna go on this property. Unfortunately, I don't think we've got enough information just yet. I just, I would be very concerned, I've lived in the Bethany community for more than 20 years, and it has been a nice place. But the one thing that concerns me, again, is this runoff issue. When you look at that piece of property, it runs directly down Witty Road and across Witty Road into the freshwater pond. Just about another 100 yards down from that, Witty Road, is another two-acre pond that is a freshwater pond. My concern is, is that if we get commercial property out here, that we are going to spoil the natural aquifer that is out there that supplies well water to many residents in that area. That's just not what we want to see. I am not opposed to some type of development. Matter of fact, I've seen the 2040 vision for Rockingham County. And I am just concerned about, without having more information from a developer that is not part of this county, that has purchased the property with absolutely, you know, no intentions of doing their primary line of business on this property, I'm just really concerned about what would go out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim? Tootony? Tootany?
State them, man, I'm okay.
Do you wish to speak, sir? Okay.
I'm not on the list, but I wish to speak.
You're not on the list?
I'm not on the list.
Oh, no.
I'm on somebody's list.
How about we just give you Jim's time then, since he doesn't want to speak? And what is your name, please?
My name is Damita Davis, and I reside...
Hold on. Damita Davis. And what is your address? Okay, and what is it you want us to know?
My husband and I have been residents of Reedsville for 20 years, 15 of those we have been in country park. It is a very unique area in that we are a bedroom community to the triad, yet we are not quite suburban, we are more rural than we are suburban. We're not, as a licensed broker, I'm not against progress. I can appreciate that. However, I will chime in and say, I don't think we have the information to make this decision about the development of that property. We now have a Dollar General, which when I came out there, we didn't have, we didn't even have a grocery store. We have a Lowe's up Church Street. And if it is to be developed into a gas station, going 158 west, there is one within three miles. Going 158 east, there is one four miles. So it's not to the benefit of the people that live there. You have Brahms and you have McCollums, right? So that we don't need another gas station. I think that any development that occurs there should be in keeping with the community that is already there. And, you know, from my perspective, that is residential. I can appreciate that the owners want to develop this, to rezon this property because it would be easier, right, to be able to market it for a wide range of uses. However, for those of us who have invested in that property and have lived there and built that community, it is a risk to our livelihood and our lifestyle. We don't want to have overdevelopment in our area. And that's really all I submit to the committee. Thank you for your time.
She said I can have her time. Sorry, I got, didn't get on the sheet.
And what is your name, sir?
My name is Larry Ingram.
And what is your address?
1391 Witty Road.
Okay, and what is it you'd like us to know?
Been at intersection for 30 years. And it's beautiful, it's residential. I come from LA, so I lived in the city, so I can truly appreciate living in the country. I'm a converted country boy. My wife and her family are the original family to Rockingham County, they are Witties. My wife's family's received that property from King George III, so they've been there a little while. Our, if you're looking at that property, ours is the property directly across 158. We have an 11-acre farm there. We farm hay for shorty Sizemore's cows, and we grow our own vegetables, have our own vegetable garden there. We used to own that property. We would still own the property, but we adopted three children, and at the time, we needed the money to build onto our house. And when we originally bought the property from the couple that was deceased, it was perked for three residential houses. And it had passed the perk and everything. And it's funny, because a week ago, I asked my wife, nothing ever happened with that property. And then we see that we get the notice that they're looking at this. When we sold the property in 2006, it was at $120,000. I noticed the value of it now is $106,000. So it's, in time, is somehow a property that's went down in value. I think that their intention is to recoup their money because they want to sell the property that they thought they had an investment in years ago. And the best way to get, at least get their money back out of it is to make a commercial. They don't have any intention of building anything there, they just want a better value property. But the people that live in their community, in that community, it means a lot more to. I would buy it back. I would take that property tomorrow. So I think the community that we have there is fantastic. I don't think we need anything. As you say, we've got gas stations, we've got, I've been to that Dollar General store twice. We've got a great community, and I don't see the sense of, if it's better the community, I don't see anybody in the community saying, "This is better for us." I just don't see it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Russell, I live at 1777 Witty Road. I just want to reiterate, a lot of stuff has been said out here, but I want you to hear it from somebody that grew up on Witty Road. I'm 52 years old and have lived on Witty Road pretty much my entire life, except for when I went to college and when I first got married, and I only lived three miles down the road on 158. I consider myself somebody that's a country, I love the country, but I want you to understand that I expect inconveniences from living out in the country. I don't want the convenience of a commercial property right up the road from my house. Yes, people talk about the Dollar General, I was against the Dollar General. I didn't want it in my area. I also just soon drive to Reedsville, I work in Maydan, I drive to small cities, I've lived and worked in Rockingham County my entire life. I went to school here, like I said, I only left to go to college. I actually went to RCC before getting my other degree. So I'm very well invested in this county. Have three kids, all three of them have said that they want to return to live in Bethany. And I'm very proud of that because they consider themselves country. We don't want the convenience of living next to a commercial property. Yes, I was kind of disappointed when I showed up tonight, not knowing that there's a plan. That's why I've been wondering what the plan was for this land. You know, if there was a plan, I could support it maybe a little bit better. Like I said, I'm not really favoring commercial, but not knowing what's going there, it could be anything, I'm definitely not gonna support it. I know we can't stop progress. We're in a very popular part of the county, we know it's gonna continue to grow, we know that side of the Gilbert County is continuing to grow. But at the same time, you look at all the houses around, you look at all these people that have moved out there, this is what they expect. They want to live in the rural area, they want to be a part of the country, they want to experience the country life. Mr. Dixon, he has, he has the land right there, he has the pond. At the same time, my mother lives right there at 1508, she has a creek that feeds down from that same pond. I grew up playing in that creek, my kids have grown up playing in that creek. That creek leads into Hall River. There's a lot of land around there. So, you know, I hope that you take the time and opportunity to really understand and study this and realize that, yes, there's a lot of people moved out into this community, but thinking about the people that's lived here their entire life that want to stay rural, want to stay the way it is. And like I said, I understand progress, but at the same time, I don't believe this will fit into our community at this time. Thank you.
That concludes the number of people who signed up to speak on this case. Ms. Hogg, you have five minutes for rebuttal to the comments that you've heard.
I'll say, I did not come here tonight to be contentious. Of course, yes, when you own a piece of property, you want to do the best for it, you want the best for the community. Yes, you do want to benefit from that. I mean, I think that is normal, and I think everybody in here would agree to that with their own properties. And so I think everybody can understand from that perspective. It does sound like to me that there would be no room for a gas station or a Dollar General or any of that. And we certainly didn't come in here saying this, that we would do that, but it sounds like that wouldn't even be an option. So I don't think anybody has to fear that, for sure. But in light of everything we've heard tonight, we trust you live here, you know this community, you know your plans for it, and we just trust you're doing what is best for your community, and we receive that.
Discussion.
Yes.
Interestingly, the one thing I never heard from anybody that spoke was the issue of traffic.
My question was, is there any traffic count?
The speed limit on 158 up to and including that intersection's 55 miles an hour.
Yes, it is.
And there's no turn lane to get onto Witty Road from 158. I don't know, there is now? Yeah, it's, I think it's, I think it's the speed of the cars that concern me a lot with doing this.
In the office, have there been any kind of traffic counts?
Not that I'm aware of.
How about on your end, ma'am, the applicant? Did you guys do any studies?
So I'm looking at the land use plan, the 2040 vision. And if it's, if y'all want to pull it up, it's on page 51. You know, this is basically our guide, and we've seen these kinds of cases come before us a lot. And we've, you know, we've allowed some things, like we've allowed Dollar General, but there seems to be some, there, either there is some commercial within proximity, or it makes sense for the area. There, I'm having a hard time with this one. Number one, because there seems to be no, no purpose, although we have to allow all the uses that are listed by right, and it is significant, I mean, it is a long list. And also, this, this area is classified as low-density growth, which means that part of what this land use plan was, was so that parts of the county could remain rural, pastoral, but also, also allow for more growth in, as far as housing was concerned. And I remember those conversations that we had when we actually adopted the land use plan. So, and we've got specific areas for commercial growth, you know, 220 Cardi, you come before us, it's almost a given. But this, this is such a nebulous area, and the fact that there's so much RP and RA around it, I, I'm having a hard time trying, figuring out how we could fit one small parcel of neighborhood commercial in there and it not, it not violate, but it really isn't what we intended in the land use plan.
Yeah, I think I would agree, because I think the idea, it's like you give them a blank check to allow them to do whatever they want and without any further discussion by the planning board or what. And so it makes me nervous to just...
And these uses are, they will go with the zoning, and no matter who owns that piece of property, for example, they can put a...
A car wash.
A car wash. You can put a funeral home, a gift shop, you know, there, yeah.
The brewery.
Yeah, the brewery. I mean, I'm sure if the, if a brewer was going in there, maybe the neighbors wouldn't feel so bad about it. But, but to me, that's part of, we do need to consider when we're changing the zoning of this, there's got, to me, there's got to be some thought to it.
Given the nature of the comments that have been, given the nature of the comments that have been made here, and the fact that there is no specific plan that addresses... that have been made here and the fact that there is no specific plan that, that addresses these development guidelines for the neighborhood commercial district, to me, it just begs the question, I mean, is this property, was this property just purchased just for speculation?
Could have been.
Victoria made the comment earlier that with the G2 or the, the low density, putting commercial designation in there was primarily intended to serve the community. What I'm hearing the community say is you got what you want and you don't need anything else out there along these lines. And it's a blank check. I, I have a problem with it being a blank check.
The gentleman that owned the property prior, last person to speak up. Did you, you don't want to have it perked three times or had three perks?
We actually had it perked when we were selling it to...
So you, you had it perked for three houses?
Yeah.
So the property, as far as the topography and the land, it was good enough to perk, right?
Yeah.
So there's other options that could be considered for the property without rezoning it?
Thing about runoff.
They're concerned with the type of runoff.
Asphalt parking lot part of it, for residences with driveways, there wouldn't be the runoff that the folks have talked about tonight. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not, but I will. There's been several offers tonight to repur, to purchase this land for you and I'm, I would make a recommendation that you talk to some of those folks before we, before you leave tonight. I don't know if y'all drove up from Pender County. I know it's the coast. So it's a, it's a good, almost four hour drive because I've done it multiple times. I have a daughter that lives in Pender County. But I have, personally, I have trouble seeing any kind of commercial. And if you look at the, if you look at the list and it's two pages long and there's not a lot of things on that list that would actually fit in the neighborhood.
I thought we settled on the winery.
Well, I saw, I saw...
Brewery might be okay.
I saw miniature golf.
Well, and what I do...
That's going to be a parking lot and everything that goes with it.
And, and I'd like to make the point, if you don't come to planning board meetings, and I, I know it's a little scary for citizens to come here, but we, you know, we hear these cases every month. So we sort of have a rhythm that we do, that we have in place and we do consider everything. And this is why we have these discussions. So, and this is out for public. The, the public views this and I'm always surprised to see how many people actually go back and watch these things. But we do this thoughtfully and we do this with the community in mind. And, you know, sometimes we make decisions that the community directly might not be happy with, but it overall for the county and the citizenry, we think it's the right thing. So I do want everybody to understand that we are thoughtful. We, we do consider, we've got resources up here that we're looking at, but our main resource certainly is the land use plan. So, and that's where we all, what we all go back to. But I just, I wanted to make sure that you all and the public that might view this understand that we, we're not doing this out of pocket.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to deny the request to rezone the specific parcel to the requested zoning district contrary to the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the Board Agenda Packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and to be included in the minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to deny this application. All in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so your application is denied. Now, that, having said that, at the next, it's 30 days, right, Victoria? When's the next commissioners' meeting? On February 17th, the commissioners will meet in these very chambers and you're welcome to present your same argument to them. They have the final say. Our denial is merely a recommendation. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming. We'll take a minute or two before we have Victoria come and start the next case for us. Does that make the two of you feel like you're on the hot seat over there? Whatever, what else gone? Okay, our next case.
Next case is case 2025-02. This is a request to rezone a property from residential agricultural to highway commercial. And this is in the Wentworth Township. It is a standard rezoning. Making sure it's showing this time. Okay. This parcel measures a total of 9.52 acres according to the tax map and is located approximately 2,000 feet east southeast of the Wentworth Town limit and a little over one mile from the west northwest border of the Reedsville ETJ. As far as utilities, this parcel is served by Dan River Water and Individual Septic System Utilities. This parcel abuts others that are zoned residential agricultural and highway commercial. Nearby parcels include a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional zoning. The parcel is located in the O2 rural land class according to the land use plan. And this land class is generally categorized as rural, although the patterns of commercial zoning in the area are atypical of the O2 land class. Let's see. The land use plan promotes the development of new commercial opportunities while supporting the retention and expansion of existing businesses. So in 1988, the parcel was zoned residential agricultural. And then in 2024, the adjacent parcel to the west was fully zoned to highway commercial. All right, this is the Troublesome Creek watershed you're looking at with a little bit of Jordan Lake. As far as reasonableness, the parcel meets the minimum lot size required. The zoning request is not generally supported by the intents and descriptions of the O2 land class. Nevertheless, there exists a significant degree of commercial and industrial zoning in the area. The rezoning request will allow all uses in the highway commercial zoning district similar to the uses allowed already occurring on the adjacent parcel. All right. So immediately adjacent tracks include a mix of open lands, residential uses, and commercial uses. Nearby uses along 87 feature a broad mix of use types, including multiple instances of highway commercial and heavy industrial. So given all this information, staff recommends approval of case 2025-02. Do you all have any questions? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Would we have any issues here with, you know, any, any kind of potential runoff into the, into the Troublesome Creek here?
I'm not aware of any runoff issues. I could see why you, you know, with a little stream going there. I feel like the applicants would have more information on that potentially.
That would be good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, did we have a conversation, I think about four or five months ago about revaluating the, the, what we want to do with this 65 corridor here about whether it needs to be reconsidered for its growth and so forth instead of focusing on the 220? Yeah, so I, that's, I think it kind of brings this question back up to, you know, how should we consider a property along this corridor?
And do we have to, when we consider those, is, do the cases start the conversation? Does this prompt, does this prompt us to look at this area? Because I remember the consensus was that this is absolutely a commercial area, almost the same as 220. There's a lot of commercial, industrial up and down this highway. And we, I think the, the notion was, although I don't think we had any formal mechanism...
I think we asked, we asked the staff to go take a look at, you know, to do, to make some recommendations. And so we haven't heard, seen that, but here, you know, we're back at the table having a conversation.
Which we are working with the steering committee right now on some expansions. So that could factor into that later.
Okay, good. Thank you.
One more question. On the, I guess what would be the north side, on the south side of 87 there, up at the top of this photo here, it shows a little panhandle there, which is a, apparently a separate parcel. There's, that is just, I assume that's just for access down to this other parcel that we're talking about, right?
I believe so, but I would double check with the applicants.
Right away. So there, but, but it, so it needs to be rezoned as well. It says RA on that and RA on the other, so I'm assuming that there's two, are there two, actually two different...
It's .3 acres. That little piece is three acres.
I believe they would also have access through their existing operation. So they could just be taking a road back. Do you got some information on that?
We need to get them up here.
Expansion of the highway commercial that's to the west, basically.
That's what they're doing.
The zoning on those two parcels would have to be consistent.
All right. John, before we do that, let's, let's talk with the applicant first.
Okay.
Okay, Victoria, thank you. Mike Hall.
I'll live it.
Yeah, we need, we need you to say your name and address for the record.
Mike Hall. My address is 138 Hall Farm Road, Reedsville, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you. Is your, is your access to the property that you want rezoned from your existing property?
Yes.
Okay, then you don't need to worry about that little strip of land, John.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll, you'll still come in the same entrance, the exit area to get, get there as well.
Okay. And this is just really for expansion?
Yeah, yeah, for the mini storages.
Seems pretty straightforward then.
It is.
Any, any questions for Mike? Dwayne, do you have any questions? No.
I'm just wondering, as we go to discussion, if we, if we keep having these and we, you know, about every three or four months, one of these cases will come up, does, will this help us to, I don't want to say force the issue, but will it, will it help us to solidify re, you know, looking at this corridor for growth?
Well, 87 from the split with 65 by Mom's Kitchen there, all the way heading to Reedsville is, there's a lot of highway commercial in there.
But it, unlike, say, 220 when we, where we know there's intended growth, we had talked about this being that, that second area of the county that we, that we really thought that there should be some thought to, to intended growth there because we keep coming up with these cases. That, that would be the second corridor.
Yep. Of course, to do that, I think we'd have to reexamine the land use plan.
Yeah. Well...
Until that's done, it stays as it is.
So that one of the questions that came up, that came up earlier was about runoff. And so if you're expanding the, your storage facility, you know, units, that's going to be all parking lot and stuff like that. So you have plans for how you're going to deal with the runoff and stuff like that related to this property?
We're, we're working toward that. We've, I guess we'd, we'd end up maybe putting a overrun pond or whatever in and the riffraff and all, the way, similar to the way we did it before. And we, we would work with that, yes.
So your business is doing pretty good or in that first part that we approved a little while ago?
Yes, sir. It stays 95% full all the time and we, you know, we have calls all the time to have more space and that's what we're shooting for now.
Good.
I would recommend approval of this request to rezone the specified parcel to highway commercial zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements included in the Board Agenda Packet submitted during the presentation and as will be included in the minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All in opposition, like sign. There is no opposition, so we're going to recommend to the commissioners that they approve your request.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all listening to it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that, on them parcels up there, how wide of a, right away would we have to rezone to get into it from 87? How wide is usually here?
I think it's 30 feet. 30 feet, 30 foot wide. You'd have to have, if it's a commercial property that you're accessing, you have to have a two-way road. So you're talking about 20 foot wide road plus 10 feet of, or it might be 40 foot. But if you could get away with, without having to, what happened here? If you can get away with using that entrance that you're using now and not having to go through NC DOT for a driveway permit, save yourself a lot of paperwork and expense. Okay. Under new business, I'm going to give each one of you one of these, take one and pass it. And John, you can, wait, did I get one? Pass these down. The North Carolina General Assembly has amended General Statute 160D-601D, which covers downzoning. And by definition, downzoning, downzoning is accomplished by either decreasing the development density of land to be less dense than it was allowed under its previous usage, by reducing the permitted uses of land that are specified in the zoning ordinance or land development regulation to fewer uses that were, were allowed under its previous usage. That means taking something like one of these usage lists we looked at tonight and just arbitrarily chopping out a bunch of stuff that's on there. But then they've added this new item and I got to tell you, it's, it's kind of confusing. By, this is brand new now and this is the amendment, by creating any type of nonconformity on land not in the residential zoning district, including a nonconforming use, nonconforming lot, nonconforming structure, nonconforming improvement, or nonconforming site element. I had a long conversation with Clyde Albright, our attorney, county attorney, this morning and he wasn't exactly clear on just what these legislators are after with this amendment. But of concern to me was the fact that this amendment is retroactive until sometime in early June. And what, what the section is saying that they, they want to go back and a lot of these downzonings that were permitted from June to December when this was passed may have to be revisited because they're now in violation of the law. Well, I sort of have a constitutional conflict problem with that in that this creates an ex post facto law. problem with that, in that this creates an ex post facto law. And how you can say to someone that, okay, we let you do this six months ago when it was legal, but now it's illegal, so you can't do it anymore?
That's not right.
So anyway, Clyde went ahead, and I've already read this, went to the UNC School of Government and printed up, or got a copy of this, Limits on Downzoning, written by Adam Lovelady. I know him personally, and the man is a real genius when it comes to this stuff. So what he's written about it should add a lot of clarity for you. But read it and log it in your little file cabinet up here.
Can you think of any cases that we've approved that would be...
No, I'd have to go back and take a look at them, John, but I know we've made a lot of zonings from RP and highway commercial back to RA, and whether or not those are subject to the conditions they're talking about here or not, I really don't know. Clyde's going to look into that for me as well, so...
This applies to the improvements on those properties as well?
Yeah.
That's weird.
That don't make sense.
Well, the General Assembly does a lot of things that don't make any sense. You know, we elect these people to make our laws, but we forgot to tell them they have to be good laws. With that in mind, I want to have a motion made to adjourn the meeting, and please don't go anywhere, but I have an announcement to make off the record.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. No opposition, so the meeting is adjourned.